Six apart.
Right. Perfect. Then we go. After questions?
Great. The Lord is with us. To the light. Seasoned. Consider the Father, who is his hand, foundation, under God, invisible, that he is.
Let's just real quickly, um, Sarah is out six, I'll be sharing immediately. We're voting this as a presentation from the administration, now you can decide they're gonna go through each section or pull all questions until they get to the end of the section. Um, and then just try to be orderly like we were last time, just be recognized and speak one time, let people speak and then come back and learn.
Great. So my main role is to advance the presentation of them. If I falter in that, you're only gonna push them back. So. We'll basically go through and we'll start with some general information and then we'll get to each of the attendance areas and see what the other highlight areas. And some heavens, I feel good to ask any questions after each section. We're here to help. So. The first slide just is a five year representation of the attendance over the past from twenty eighteen on. I think as you can see, the level of enrollment has declined over that time. By little over a hundred. So. That's no different from most of the places in New Hampshire. In fact, there was an article just recently about that and the continued decline of enrollment. If we go and we look at this year's proposed operating budget, you'll see that it's thirty six million, four hundred and forty nine thousand, four hundred and seventy six, and now I will turn it over to Mary.
Okay. Excellent. So this is a summary of the total instruction. Um, as you can see, that's up by point two one percent. Then our support services is up by six point four seven percent. I'll go into a little bit more about why that is in a little bit here. So the total general fund is up by two point five one percent. Um, then we have our other funds and the operating budget is overall is up by one point seven seven percent. So a couple of key factors, um, the health insurance, we got a guaranteed maximum rate of eighteen point two percent. Um, do I think it'll come in that high? Probably not, but that you just don't know. So it, that's what they're um, giving us is the guaranteed amount, the highest it will go is eighteen point two percent, and that's what we've budgeted for. Um, the total increase though is around off of the fiscal year twenty three budgeted numbers was six hundred and sixty two thousand. Um, before I go any further, I just want to talk about a little bit about fiscal year twenty three's numbers. When you're going through your, your books, you're gonna see that there's some variances between um, in lines such as insurance, New Hampshire retirement, wages. Um, I can tell you that I went back and looked at fiscal year twenty two. I looked at where we are year to date or what we have encumbered for fiscal year twenty three. I looked at fiscal year twenty three's budget and then I looked at my fiscal year twenty four for all of my staff and things of that nature. I am confident with my numbers and fiscal year twenty four that they are correct. Um, because they are by person, they're done a little bit differently than what they've been done in the past. Um, moving on instructional resources, um, we do have a K through four literacy reading and writing and a six through eight math. item in our budget this year for three hundred eighty five thousand, which um, we will be talking about later on. We have IT software and equipment, um, it increased by sixty five thousand, one hundred and fifty three, but the actual amount of increase was seventy six thousand dollars. Um, Lynn was able to make some other cuts and modifications within her budget for this year to be able to absorb some of those costs. This is to upgrade and replace our place our ten year old servers, which really need to be done at this point. Um, again. They're ten years old, it's time to do it and we, we're gonna hopefully get this through on this year's budget. The second year of the support staff contracts in here for a hundred and seventy seven, one fifty three was the cost that was put on the warrant last year. Special education, our district placement budget line is up by three hundred and fifteen thousand and we'll be speaking to that, Xander will be speaking more to that. Facilities projects, we have four hundred and eighty eight thousand, five hundred included in the budget. So in years past, they've been as separate warrant articles, so I just want to make you aware that it's actually included in this, the budget number. Um, so obviously if you guys decide to move that number out, that will lower the overall budget. Next one, um, you'll also notice, and I know that um, Sammy asked about this last time, and fiscal year twenty four, not you, the other state. The data communication line under method five is, it was allocated there, but it's been moved to the individual schools under voice com. I may rename that um, to be able to take in the data communication, communication part of it, we are able to now break it down by school for internet use and, and things like that. Um, the next thing is we're looking to replace a two thousand eight Ford for a F four fifty dump truck. For eighty three thousand, five hundred, it's in dire need to get replaced. Um, the next one is the number we proposed wage increase is five percent. As you can see, the total including the benefits is a hundred and eighty nine thousand. I just want you to know that this includes your technology people, your special education related services people, the principals, central office vocational ed, which is the J R O T C specifically. Staff, um, and all those staff members and then the directors and uh, facilities and transportation. So it's not just the S A U, there's a lot of other people within those lines. Um, next one, moving on. Adequacy aid changes. Um, I got the estimated adequacy aid. As you know, the past three years, the state has been playing with our adequacy aid quite a bit and changing things and adding things on. When we go into the new year, so this is what they've given us for this year. Again, I don't know what they'll do in September again, maybe they won't do anything, but right now our adequacy aid is down with the exception of Charleston and Langdon. Um, and that is mainly because of free and reduced numbers being so high, I know that's Langdon's what's driving Langdon's numbers. Um, but the rest of them are down. Um. Oh, hang on here. Next one, statewide education tax, I put this in because I think it's important. Last year, the state decided to lower the amount of statewide education tax. That you had to raise, this is money we have to raise, it's what the state says that we have to pay um, out of our adequate or education. Um, this year, they did not giving us that same relief that they gave us last year. Um, so as you can see, we're gonna be paying more, so the towns are gonna have to raise more money. From their sweat taxes than what they did in previous year, it's going back, back up to where it was in the previous year, pretty much. Um, I didn't list twenty twenty two, but last year was a major drop, this year went up again. Um, that was a one time deal, um, and they were very adamant about that when they did it. Um, this is just the instructional services line, would you have all this in your budget, just showing you where the increases and decreases are within it. Regular instruction, we have decreases, but that is mainly because of personnel changes. Um, we've had a lot of people retire or leave that were higher end pay scale and we've hired in lower end or lower pay scale people, which has made a difference there. Special education related services is up. Um, again. That's. It's mainly the cost of people and the cost of um. Oh gosh, sorry, I lost my train of thought. Um. Can't believe this.
Is that a district cost?
Yeah. Your cost, sorry. Um, vocational services is up too, vocational education is up because we had to add another J R O T C instructor. Um, so we only had one for a while and now we have two again. So that is the driving force between the vocational education costs and then co-curricular programs is down a little bit. The next one is your support services. Um, again, you know, this is up in some places and down in others, guidance is down, it's, it's mainly driven within the um. The, the lines that have to do with the staffing. So. Like I said, there was differences between twenty three and twenty four, and that's what's driving those, those changes in some areas. Okay, operations and maintenance is up by ten point eight one percent and remember the four thousand or four hundred eighty eight thousand is in there, so that is a driving force behind that. This is the budgeted facilities projects, Vialis, we have fifty two thousand, five hundred. We've been over this a little bit, the asbestos, asbestos abatement for the nurse's office, air monitoring, mini split in the outback, which would be two units in each classroom. The Elster primary is thirty one thousand, five hundred, again asbestos abatement. Um, rooms eight, nine and air monitoring, Acworth is twenty three thousand for state, um, paint and staining the building. Langdon is looking to replace a bleach field. Charleston middle is looking to put in new air units in the locker rooms. And then we go to Charleston primary, this may change based on depending on what kind of roof we put in. Um, right now, this is just a shingling roof, but we have a quote for a standing seam marry roof, which would last longer. Um, which was quoted at a hundred and seventy thousand. So there, and I think we have a hundred and twenty five thousand in here for the roof. So again, that will change based on talks or whatever we decide to do with that or what, what you guys define. Walpole Elementary, um, is looking at a boiler conversion propane. Walpole Primary, again, you're looking at replacing ceilings in the um, teachers' room and nurses' room. Remove carpet, replace some tile, asbestos abatement and air monitoring, so there's a lot of, a lot of these projects. North Walpole is looking to just do a few things, again, it's a catch base and repair. Remove carpet, replace tile, asbestos abatement and air monitoring. High school, again, this is just asbestos abatement and I didn't put the dollar mount in there for that one. So the dollar mount for the high school was forty three thousand, five hundred. Okay. Now I'm gonna turn it over to somebody else, special education services, Andrew.
I can speak to that, so the driving costs for special education this year are on a district cost, what happened last year is I put in the budget. Um, we figured we're gonna have ten out of district students, I put in extra two, just thinking that would be enough, we ended up with sixteen. Um, that was due to move-ins and unexpected placements by D C Y F, by Department of Health and Human Services. When that happened, we have no choice in that, um, we bear the academic cost, they bear the residential cost of that, and then increases are out of district costs, there's really nothing I can do. But we have movements that have happened, um, students are already out of district place, there's really nothing I can do about that either, so that's part of why this is increasing. I broke it down so everybody could see, first we have under the charter schools, we have more students that are going to charter schools in our area. And when they go with I E Ps, we have to provide the services, so we do send like our own S L Ps down to provide that service, I will send like the occupant, they're big. But they provide the special education services there, so we can build for that, they also, there's parent educational support, we provide, we have to pay for that service too, so those costs have gone up. Out of district placements, I just explained, um, we've had an increase in students without a district placement, so that's why that's up by two hundred fifty nine thousand, two hundred and twenty. Um, we just have more students with more significant needs, the cost of the out of district placements have also increased. So that happened last year, it went up pretty substantially, there's not a lot I can do about that. Um, we do get, uh, if they call things about catastrophic aid spending back, so if it's over three times the amount of what the tuition rates, it's about sixty six thousand, if it goes over sixty six thousand, we get. It's eighty percent back, I'll check my numbers on that, it's a year later is when you get that, so you don't get it immediately, so like right now we'll be getting last year's amounts, but we do get some of that money back, so that does help us in the long run. But you only get a percentage of that money back too, so I'll let people know that, and then tuition residential, the out of district tuition residential cost increase. I am having a heck of a time trying to figure out the rate increase, I'm estimating it's gonna be a quarter five percent, I kinda just guesstimated, I have had conversations with them. What happened when they were doing sort of a two to three percent and then last year it really went up. How many costs, and again, they're struggling with staffing and they also realize that there are very limited placements for students with mental health needs in the state. And even our surrounding states right now, um, if you talk to other districts. The Department of Health and Human Services are placing students as far away as Arkansas. Um, at this point in time, and then you get this whole thing about this station, we're not there yet luckily with our students, but we've just run out of placements and people live. So that could blow up, so that's why that area is up.
Thanks for asking.
Oh. Sure. If you wanna pause here.
Sure. If anyone has any questions, talk to them.
So we are, if there were any questions for Mary or Andy.
I've got a few quickies. Uh. What, what do we use a Ford F four fifty dump truck for?
Use it daily to move stuff from what I understand.
I know, but that's a big truck and we have a small firm.
It's also, if you by the same would be correct, it's also used for plow, plow, they say him.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
But it seems like a big truck for. Moving what?
Well, they, they also hauls around the um, tractor, tobacco and tractor, they're using different schools for, for doing uh, different uh, maintenance work and stuff.
Okay.
Obviously haul day complete, drive on trailer for the tractor.
So is there any chance of using a three quarter ton to do all of that? Cause I know I haul equipment with a three quarter ton.
That would be a question asked for Bill. Bill Wong.
We've always had a one ton.
I know, but a four fifty is bigger than a one ton.
Yeah. We all have that conversation, so just. Get the questions.
Can I ask another question? Uh, J R, J R O T still, uh, another body, another instructor, does the military pay for any of that?
They pay a portion of the salary. I believe it's half, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
So that increases just a half of what the tradition calls for?
Yeah.
Okay. And Walpole Elementary, you're switching to propane from what pellets? Don't we have a pellet boiler there?
Yeah, yes, they have pellets. And then.
So you're, you're going from pellets to propane?
That's a bill body.
Thought we were going, that's the oil furnace.
I think, I think the oil furnace is what they're replacing with the propane and then we have the pellet thing at the elementary school as well. Okay. All right.
For dual fuel, they're taking a boiler to dual fuel. Like did it all those.
Oh, we already did that.
Well, I don't know that we did Walpole in because we took it to oil and pellets.
Okay.
We didn't put a propane farm in at Roscommon Elementary, we bought Walpole Elementary because we went dual fuel with the pellet burns. So they're probably now gonna, because their burners are old enough, they're gonna switch them out with dual fuel.
Gotcha. Did you?
The other question?
Sandra, you made mention of the out of district placements and the move-ins this year, does that mean we have a problem this year as well? Financial problem?
Right now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It does, okay, this is, this is both years, this isn't acting. How big of a problem we talking about this year?
I know. Um, I think in this particular line, I'm probably over budgeted almost four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. And, and you had said it was, I'm gone a long time for numbers change, it was three times?
So I just got right here in front of me, so how it works is um.
It'd be three and a half.
Yeah, so we get, it's the cost per pupil tuition they give you is nineteen thousand, thirty four eight cents, and then it's three and a half times that amount, so it's sixty six thousand, six hundred and nineteen twenty eight.
And then it's eighty percent.
Up to a maximum of a hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and forty eight, which things have a lot. But I'll be honest with you, it's not when you start looking at some of these residential placements and even our data.
So that hasn't changed, it's three and a half times and then eighty percent of the next six and a half times and then at ten times it cuts off completely.
Yeah, exactly, and it's a year behind.
Yeah, and it's a year behind, yeah. Although yeah, you can borrow against that, it's one of the exceptions, I don't know if we ever done it, but you can do it. So.
Can I answer just one thing on that line too, it's not always eighty percent.
No. Oh no, that's short to the bet, yes.
And they're estimating that you're actually giving us more than eighty percent, but.
I just don't.
Just telling you.
Yeah.
I've seen it coming at six states.
Good point.
I don't believe it till I see it.
Yeah.
I've heard it's too long, but I've been a long, I understand that a lot of things are said, but until I get this report that actually tells what we're gonna get. So I try to plan for the worst case scenario and then hopefully get better than that.
But basically the method hasn't changed, but neither has the pattern.
Correct.
The state's pattern. Yeah.
Any questions? Do you? Revenue for the offset on that seems low to be based on the dollar and not the floor spend.
That can go up and increase, um, I know that we've always budgeted a little bit low. Um, I can make an adjustment.
Are you still putting it in C A D?
Yes, I am, it's under C A D. Um, they budgeted it low this year, I am, when I went to do the stuff with the taxes, it was higher. We, we estimated eighty percent, just two hundred and I think eighty two thousand, I want to say, instead of the real sixty five that was in there. But.
I know.
That's one of those lines that I just don't know.
Where does the special education catastrophic aid reimbursement go when it comes back to the district?
There's a revenue line that's, it goes to, and then it would be dispersed, however, it normally would be through the.
That's my question.
Dispersed in the same manner as it's, as the expenses, right, and it matched. So it's been about A D M. A D M on the expense side, A D M on the revenue side.
Thank you. And. How do we pay for, what method is the F four fifty dump truck at eighty three five? What method?
Method six.
Five.
Is it five?
We talked about it the other day.
Did we talk about it the other day?
Yeah.
And we probably did.
Five is not six. It's gonna be one to everyone, yeah.
That's, you sure it's not six? Is it five? Okay. Yep. Five.
And that's generally used equally around the district?
Yes, as far as I know, yes, I would have to ask Bill Body if it was, I'm not sure.
If it's used for plowing, that's not. Equal, equal across the district as many schools have their own plowing contracts. So just a matter of equity on that truck, I, I question how the money is raised and how it's being used.
When we talked about this two weeks ago, method five, we said it was computer percent distribution, so that was.
Must be four then.
And we thought it might have been six or four. Well, that method, like the plus relief distribution. Or building replacement costs. Now she's right, it's four.
She's no, I'm sad. Now I'm really messed up.
Five is computers.
Any more questions for them? Okay, yeah, just a question, can we get a number of special ed students per town, like working out by town, that violate anything?
I don't think that violates anything.
That's a three.
Um. Yeah, I can do, I'm gonna get, I can get numbers tonight, I should have.
Yeah. That'd be fine. After it's over, I'll pick them up or you can send Miss Steve to the distributor for the committee.
I can do it right now, I'm like, right, I'm in here. He's a good student.
I'll send out to the district.
Okay.
Yeah.
Xavier Ford is special ed student, so we receive tuition. We have the movement district, you know, it's never not just. Because I, I know. We have a lot of students that are sent to other locations. Right, are they special ed students?
So are you asking, I'm just about to say, so we have students that are, are students, well, not students, that go to out of district placements, so we pay tuition. To send them, not like um, to another district, it's really like a private placement. So as examples, we go to community, we pay tuition for them to go there.
So we pay for them to go there, we bring them here every day.
We do, so depending on where they go and depending on our, we have limited transportation. Um, ours is great, we just give the community house, you're in for some there, so like, let's say Granite Hill, in the, like, students go. They transport as part of the tuition package that we send them, we also have students that may go to. Ashley Lot Academy team. So that's different, I have to pay transportation to send them there, and sometimes transportation can be as costly as the placement.
Because I have seen the lines that add up in Thomas and some of the other, mostly our private that are, that have this year so far. Can you estimate what those are? You know, the thing that it's high is a hundred thousand.
Yeah, I can, uh, I have the numbers. I can tell you exactly what we're spending.
And that's just transportation.
It's just transportation, and what happened um, this past year to all of us is the transportation cost went up exponentially. Uh, so we were paying, let's say, a hundred and fifty dollars a day, let's say for transport, just recently one of the companies went up to four hundred dollars. So I'm trying to find other places to transport, but the transportation doesn't have enough people to do it. So then when I call it a place like Adventure Limited, you know, just give some examples, they don't have anybody to transport. So it's coming down to like just a few Conway soccer transportation, like I have very few places I can transport. And they have to be, like, I can't just do, like, somebody who's a private taxi driver, I don't even say it like that, but it has to be somebody who's shit. Needs all the vetting required too, but. Yeah, that's costly, they're trying to be seventy eight thousand, seventy six thousand, depending on where they're being transported, um, and if there's any other services provided. Okay, but I can definitely get that.
We've had the discussions for later, right? Yeah, we've gone through all this, so, yeah.
You ready, ready, Kim?
Yeah.
All right, go now.
Great, well, thank you for all participating in this very uh, important process. Um, we were asked to speak to anything that was uh, a decrease or an increase that was different from the years before. And I'll just highlight it through here, um, the decrease in wages of teachers, Mary already mentioned. Uh, we have less cost of a new Vials teacher and two new A P S teachers. Um, and that's because I had two longtime teachers retire and one longtime teacher resign. And replaced with, you know, more bachelor level uh, teachers. Also, we had no music teacher at Elster Primary, grade five and Atworth, that position was um, historically split with the high school. And we cannot find anyone that will teach music pre-K to grade twelve. So this year we have reconfigured for the twenty three, twenty four school year, where we will be budgeting for one full time music teacher per attendance area. And hoping that we can, can fill that position. Um, the budget for a pair at Sarah Porter, we've had a pair at Sarah Porter for a number of years. It was my understanding last year, it was supposed to be put into the S R funds and we found out at the end of last year, it was not. So that's why there's such a marked increase, because now it is in the budget. Um. Two parents at Elster Primary and Vialis, these are not new budgeted, they were in last, the current year budget of last year, the twenty one, twenty two. Uh, actually no, they're in the current budget, twenty two, twenty three. And they are, it's I E P needs, I just couldn't fill them, you know, this year, when we were interviewing last spring. Um. Decrease in wage subteachers, that's kind of self-explanatory, we couldn't get any subs. The decrease in sick leave buyback, um, less in this proposed budget, that the two long teacher, long time teachers retired in twenty two. And in my uh, equipment line and, and supply lines, pretty much. Uh. No significant changes, it's just, uh, central office told us last year that we needed to move items that were less than a thousand dollars that were in the seven thirty equipment lines. That was under instruction, most likely was P E equipment that we were paying for as equipment when it should have been supplies. So that's why there's a, a larger increase in the supply line and a decrease in the equipment line.
Okay. Just as an aside, so we can do this either way, but I think you'll find at each of the attendance areas, there's very little changes that have happened. So if you want to ask questions per attendance area, that's fine, if you want to go through them all, you know, it's really what other people's thoughts are.
Just do one more.
Yeah, um. When, when the students get to Vials, or maybe even fifth grade, do you find as they come together from the three towns, that there's any assimilation problems that the, that um. They're equally prepared and ready to move on when they get there?
Well, I, I could say yes, I mean, they're pretty much using the same curriculum, I think social emotionally, I think it's tougher sometimes for little schools to. You know, join the big schools, but a lot of them play sports together, you know, in rec. So, and so they have siblings, we always have like step up days and to get them acclimated. We have quite a few activities where we bring Sarah Porter and Atworth students to uh, Vialis to participate in like performances, we had a science show recently. You know, and all three elementaries come to that, so we try to integrate as much as possible.
I, I asked the question because. I, I asked the question because I just wanted to know that the combined classes that we've been doing there for ever. It isn't detrimental to them when they come together and, and.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's detrimental, I'd say over the last five to ten years, it's been harder because of the way the curriculum is. The teacher needs to teach like reading to first grades while a para assists with the second grade while they're doing, you know, some independent work. So they, it's, it's, or you might have a variety, I know one of my schools has a variety of kids that are in grades three, four. And some of them are kindergarten level and others are at grade six. So you see a larger span of ability levels in social emotional needs.
I agree, and that's, that's the problem when, when those combinations are random, they are what they are every year.
Right.
You know, you could have three first graders with twelve second graders or vice versa. And it does make it harder when that occurs. If you had a situation where you could kind of handpick those classes and, and assemble those children. In a, in, in a not random way, it would probably work even better.
But it's hard to do that when you, you can't discriminate, you, you have specialized students, you know, integrated within your.
Oh, no, I didn't mean that, you know, so. If you had a setting where, where you were still maintaining a single grade, first grade and a single second grade and then a combination of a one and two. It would actually be a little bit easier to put that class together than it would be when it's just simply random. Even the class size could be smaller.
I have a question. I was trying to make sense of, there's a number of shared positions between Allstate, Atwater and Sarah Porter. And I was trying to make heads or tails of how those are allocated, and I couldn't. Between the three, some of them, it's, it's apparently, I see fairly obvious, it was like ten percent, but they weren't the same for Atwater and Allstate and Langley. Same, same percentage. But you couldn't figure out how the nurse and how guidance and how special ed were. It's, it's a feeling, I think of this, of the.
I think it's going to vary, I have two special educators at Elsted Primary, one goes, works at Elsted Primary and goes to Sarah Porter. And one works at.
Yeah, not questioning, I just like to get from the business office how, how you allocated those funds to each other towns.
It's by, I mean, usually by use, one of the methods and by use, I mean, I. I, I would have to look at it to.
Yeah, that's why. Again, it's a feeling, I think, our, the articles really don't specify how attendance area will split, but split. Position.
But you got to remember, some of those are based on need, so that's a harder situation, yeah.
That's what I'd like to know, some might be ADM, some might be. So, just like no. Any other questions for?
Okay, ready?
So in Charlestown, as you can probably see in the budget box, there are no significant changes. Gail did allude to our reconfiguration of music moving forward. We may be looking at that for other positions like PE. And specialty areas like that, ultimately, we're going to have a full-time music teacher in Charlestown that will do band and music classes. K eight, which will provide a lot more flexibility within our schedules. It's not a change, it's just, we've always had one at PE, it will just be reconfigured a little differently. We're looking at reassigning special ed, whoops, I just went through that. Nurse, there were some questions on nursing, we do have two full-time nurses within Charlestown. One is typically housed at Charlestown Primary School, one is housed typically at CMS most of the time. And the CMS also shares with Nora Charlestown, so that's her responsibility. But as always, with any medical, they both share responsibilities with Nora if, if an emergency comes up or students need. Need additional support. So that's how it's been done in the past, that will remain the same moving forward. If you look at our supply lines, there are no changes, really, actually have gone down in most cases. Ultimately, you may see some fluctuations in individual line items. But it is looking at replacement cycles, Corey and I have worked. A little bit more diligently this year and replacing cycles for all three schools. And that is going to remain a definitely forward. We did add some lines. We're looking at a polyboard, which is actually the board, or similar to a board up here. We were able to purchase quite a few with grant money this past year through ESSR. With the, with the list of students, kindergarten, first, second grade, they really enjoy using those and they're really in hands to education. So we're looking at adding one, maybe one a year, so that is our increase at CPS. We did look at adding some additional lines for furniture for CMS. And ultimately, it comes down to broken table. Anything else I missed? And basketball, right?
And soccer balls. So the backboard at the CMS gym are. In need of replacement, and then we have soccer balls at CMS that also are worn out and require replacement at this point. So the furniture is on a replacement cycle now in both buildings, you know, and, and CCCS. MCCS, we're looking to change one classroom out at a time for more. Flexible seating and seating and physical space arrangements that are more conducive to the learning group work, collaboration, partnership. Also, to deal with kids like me who require fidgets and other things throughout the course of the day to stay focused. Heating that accommodates that as well.
What's the expected longevity of a polyboard? And will this be a. Perpetual cost, if we're adding one per year on a replacement cycle, would we expect to be buying one in perpetuity?
I would say the life expectancy is five to seven years, so I'm not a tech director though. So yes, I, I see this be, being an item that is raised. As things start wearing out a little bit quicker with technology, this would have a replacement cycle like any others. We did order quite a few out of our grant, so. Doing one a year provides us a little flexibility in five years down the road, having enough to start rotating. The ones that need replacement out and new ones in. Technology changes so quick that. It is, keep up with the times.
You, you mentioned that the first boards were purchased through ESSR brands?
I'm sorry, not the first boards, but a big group of them recently.
Some boards, right. Okay, I guess the real question is, why are, why is this now in the budget as opposed to using the next ESSR grant?
I think at the time, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but a general. Whatever. Weary was made to the staff during the summer when we were spending down one of the grants that was about to expire. And we purchased the number of polyboards that were requested, but. What we've seen is because of the benefit of the technology, you have a few additional teachers who did not receive one. Who was like, this is really good for.
Not suggesting that we don't get it, I'm just.
No, but that's the reason.
S three grant.
Yeah.
Can it be purchased through the S three grant rather than putting?
Theoretically, yeah. Well, it's all taxpayer somewhere, but not in the.
Well, not in this budget, okay.
I believe someone in Idaho would be thrilled by the S.
Wherever it comes from.
But you're correct.
Okay.
I'm looking at replacement cycles and we've discussed pretty extensively that. Replacement cycles are important, so we don't see these big swathes of, say, uniforms, for example, for sports or furniture. If you look at CPS, historically, I haven't had those fluctuations because there has been a replacement cycle. In place for, since I've been there. So it is important, you do see about a two thousand dollar increase. I cut some out to be able to adapt to, to this, but it is something that is. That people are asking for because they do see the benefit and.
Yeah, I don't, I don't doubt there's a benefit, I'm just, questions, where, where can we buy the benefit without influencing the taxpayer?
Any other questions for?
Alright, I'm guessing you're up, Justin. That's me. So for Walpole, no significant changes, especially with staffing. We are now going to be, just like everyone's talked about, paying for a full music teacher, we were originally splitting it with Alstead. But to try to keep staff and everything, we're looking for less traveling for them, so. We're going to have just this music teacher at Walpools, so we would be paying for that. No longer splitting it, supply line, there was no increase, the, we did have a increase in the equipment line. And it was mainly for mats covering our rock wall, right now, there's currently a target. And that's not really protecting the kids when they run into it, so when we had the rock wall inspected last year. We were talking to the company and they said that they do sell mats and everything, so we looked and got that. Hope from them, and that was a, a, a big piece of the increase. And then grade five replaced their tables and cabinets, was really the piece for those. But for everything else, that's, that's really at the Walpole.
So we get a list of things that are covered under the S O brands?
For sure. There's three of them, they all have actual different names, but I call them all that sort of stuff.
Whatever.
But I'll give you.
So S three is the, I guess, coming up or something like that.
One is ended.
One is ending, two is on its way down and three is coming up.
I just make sure everybody knows that we're not adding music teachers. We just restructured them, because I know we talked about, you know, Walpole has one full one now. We're not adding an additional body, they're just making it so that they're not traveling between skills.
The attendance areas, because some music teachers were traveling to three areas and to help with, you know, stability and everything, we're, we're trying to. So that they're in one central location.
Just wanted to make sure.
So, to clarify that, because I'm not, I'm not seeing it, you're not adding any. Music teacher. But you're covering more locations with a full-time?
Instead of one individual traveling to three schools in a single day. Or in some scenarios, all three attendance areas in a single week. And we had a lot of overlap, so we had, for instance, two different music teachers covering my Charlestown community school. What we are looking at doing is restructuring that, so we have only one music teacher at one Charlestown. Instead of going to three buildings, that person's only going to go to two buildings now, or instead of going to north, the middle school. And Walpole Elementary, now they're only going to be going to north in the middle school. But they might be at north for more time than they otherwise would at that. We had a lot of people running around like chickens with their heads cut off, going to multiple locations and overlap. And we have two different art teachers at north, two different music teachers at north, that makes no logical sense.
I noticed that quite a bit of turnover, and the thing that kept coming up repeatedly was the. Was the schedules and how difficult it was to manage those schedules.
So we went back to scratch and said, okay, what do we actually need in each of these buildings? How much of a full-time equivalent position do we need here? And realized that the same number of total humans who can cover the same need with fewer transitions throughout the day. So you'll save on mileage costs between locations. Hopefully reduce turnover because they're traveling to fewer locations and having to deal with fewer. Fewer overall students, fewer overall staff, fewer overall. Variables, and just be more focused in one location, and you're reducing the total number of humans in any building. Also.
Thank you.
Could also allow them to have one supervisor, rather than some of those teachers having two or three. Or maybe just two supervisors.
Well, the high school, what's in there is an athletic trainer. So it's always been in the budget, but it's only been twenty thousand dollars. This year, we're on a decline. There's typically what we did is we did fifty percent hour cost, fifty percent Cheshire Medical. And Cheshire Medical said, no, we're not sending you an athletic director, we're not paying that portion. So that's why I've added twenty thousand dollars increase in order to cover an athletic trainer, because currently we do not have one. We did not want to have, we did not have one for the fall sport, and we did not have one at the moment for winter. Sickly buyback and early retirement, Mr. Sayers is retiring and Mr. Wilczek is receiving early retirement. And that's going to be the tune of.
Hundred and fifteen, or fifty thousand, I think, hundred and sixty?
I think it's a hundred thousand dollars for Mr. Sayer.
Right, but benefits and all that added on, that's where I'm coming with my number.
And then with regards to equipment, back, we're doing one classroom, the table, and the B. One of the weight training machines that, oh, we're looking to replace it, but we can't use it. And for athletics, the soccer net at the far end field, when you first come up, there's the big black net, it's starting to get holes in it. And then football footballs. With regards to gear, it's been going several times, and they're starting to become a safety hazard. But before they come down and hurt somebody, I would like to clarify. Supplies in athletic, there is an increase. Just for supplies that we have not been getting over the years, just to try to bring us up to where we need to be. And in the office of the principal, there's posters and alumni photos, what I would like to do is. Start filling the halls with posters of students and core values and things like that to promote what we're doing here and to promote the future. In addition to that, alumni photos, to, so this would be in the printing post, their pictures of alumni. And their, the year they're graduated and what they're doing to promote students in the future. So they're here and they can begin to put faces with people as to a doctor who went through here, a welder. And things like that, and start lining the, actually the hallway down right between the cafeteria and the auditorium. And begin to just have that promote so students when they come here, it means it matters to be here at Paul Mountain. And they can begin to look at their future saying, I can do this. And then for travel, with regard to being able to go to an administrative conference and student leadership conferences. There's a couple of conferences out there for student council and the student athletic leadership team. Things like that, I would like to be able to get our students to go out, interact with other students and bring ideas back to our school and continue to be cool. Questions for me? Yes?
Specifically, bio get paid to in one lump sum or is it over a few years?
One lump sum.
And then early retirement is for several.
Yeah, for five years.
Okay, thank you.
So, follow up on that, why, why do we pay it in one lump sum? Because it's not accrued in one lump sum.
She's right, and it's almost done now anyhow, so.
That was my question, how many bodies are left there?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven bodies. Four of which are at the high school, one at Viles, one at CPS and one at Walpole Elementary. But we're getting rid of one of the highest, we have one more after that, that's a hundred thousand. Yeah, the next one's a hundred thousand, no. It's not a man.
I'm, I'm looking at Tom at your head count for next year, and I think there's an error there, because I, I think you've got too few students. It looks like it was pushed through two grades instead of one, because you've got a hundred and nine seniors, and you've got ninety-nine students in eighth grade, so you should only lose ten students. And yet you lost far more than that, and it, it appears what happened is. And it appears what happened is you lost your eleventh graders at the same time. It just, instead of shifting one to the right, somebody shifted two to the right.
That was probably.
So you're over, you're actually under. You won't lose that many students that quickly. It's coming. No, it's, it's coming, but it's not coming quite that fast.
Right, right. I'll fix that one.
It looks like you repeated the ninety-three twice.
I may.
Because you're, you're doing the spreadsheets, bring it.
Only the enrollment ones. Clearly, you want someone else doing them. I did it to help because Steve was looking for the information. And so on, some of the enrollment ones, it gets a little squirrely. So Steve and I, for example, talked about the preschool. Well, they only go half day, so I divided it by two. But then also, if you look at like kindergarten numbers, we had forty-one this year. And if you just take the preschool, there's no way we got forty-one next year. So I tried to estimate the number on that one. Other than that, the only other squirrely one is out of district and the fact that I screwed up the high school. That I know of yet.
Preschool to kindergarten is a little tricky though, because not everybody who goes to kindergarten went to preschool, right? So you have to take into account that maybe a little bigger than you think.
Do you know, Tom, in the area of family and consumer science, you have some increases in supplies and equipment? Are we replacing equipment in that program or is that a dish?
I believe it's still, that needs to be replaced. And then for supplies, it's just prices have gone up, Dave. There's a guide to buying the food and all that kind of stuff in order to get the kids in the class and.
Thank you.
The default budget?
Yes, default budget. I don't know if I need to read this to you guys, but a lot of you already know what it is. It means the amount of the same appropriations as contains in the operating budget authorized for the previous year reduced and increased, as the case may be, by debt services, contracts, and other obligations previously incurred or mandated by law and reduced by one-time expenditures contained in the operating budget. So our default budget right now is thirty-five million, seven hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-three. Going on to the next screen. So we are, the fault is under budget by six hundred fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirteen. That's the difference between defaults and the proposed. Again, there's four hundred and eighty thousand dollars sitting in that other line that if you chose to move it out, will decrease the number between the two. We have not normally done that, but it is sitting in there. And then we also had the three hundred and eighty-five thousand, so those are two big expenses that are in this year's budget. I'm not saying they don't belong there, but they're there, and without those, we would have been under.
So that's, now is that the end of it? And then general question from the last thing is the timeline to review? So that's our general.
So the four eighty-eight is sitting in twenty-six hundred, correct?
Yes, it's sitting in twenty-six hundred. So yeah, forty-eight, five hundred.
Yeah, that's why that was at eleven percent.
Exactly.
And where's the other one sitting?
Under curriculum, it's under. Yeah, so those are the two big ones.
And that was that for a program?
Three hundred and eight, yes.
Reading, writing, and math.
Steve, quick question. The thirty-six, four, four, nine, four, seventy-six doesn't line up with the printout from the by-function code? Is there a reason that it's two million dollars off?
Yeah, that's because of the two million dollars. If you look other funds, two million fifty, fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three is food service and grant.
Okay.
That's what, that's where it is. Yep. So if you take and add the thirty-three, nine, ninety-six.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay. Yep.
Under health insurance, I'm sorry. Under health insurance increases, is that all of them?
For the six sixty-two, our health insurance increase.
Last line here on this page says health insurance increases three hundred and forty-seven thousand and change on the default budget.
Yes. These, okay, there's two different numbers here in play, and that's why I wanted to make sure you understood that. The six hundred and sixty-two is based on fiscal year twenty-three's numbers. So I took fiscal year twenty-three, multiplied it by eighteen point two, that that's where the six sixty-two is. The three hundred thousand number is the actual number that I have come up with based on the staff we have today, based on the plans they have. So we had staffing changes from fiscal year twenty-three to now.
But it's, it's everybody.
Yes.
Okay, no, it's not a big difference, but I don't think the non-union staff belong in there. It's not a continuing contractual obligation. Am I correct, Jim?
Don't we have to provide the health insurance, though? It's part of our contract.
Unlike your union, the non-union, they don't have, you know. The, the sports staff and the teachers, yes, because the law says that their contract lives on. The non-union staff, sadly, that's not the case. Therefore, technically, it's not an obligation the following year. We could, I'm saying we'd never do this, but we could eliminate health insurance for the non-union staff. Okay, we're not going to do that.
You'd run into other problems.
Well, yes, as I said, we're not going to do that. My thing is we awfully could do that. Therefore, it's not a default item. It's not going to be a huge difference because ninety percent of the staff is unionized.
I think historically, we've always included everyone.
That's what I thought. That's why.
I didn't, I didn't.
See, and I, I've done that where I've been in the other places too, I've put in.
Because I, you didn't have Affordable Care Act.
But it's still not a contractual obligation. You can not renew everybody. You don't have an ongoing.
If you can't, based on our size.
I don't know, ask the state.
I can ask, I can ask the state on it, but I.
Not going to be a huge difference. Ninety percent of the staff is unionized. So it's not, it's not big money.
But that's how I.
You know.
You know.
My understanding of it was because the, the non-union contracts don't live on, therefore the health insurance is not technically a default item.
It's no good definition of default.
I tried to follow what we've done in the past, but I know I learned from Jim on default budgets, so.
I just know how I dealt with it. Apparently Jamie, Jamie dealt with it differently.
We all have it, yeah.
And that's part of the problem with the default budgets is they suggested.
What's the last?
Well, that's our last slide. Then we have to talk about the budget timeline because there's.
Yes, you did have one more question. The first two pages in this book, the, the orange bar says there's fourteen hundred and eighteen students. On the very next page, it says thirteen eighty-five. I'm wondering which is right, or if there's a reason why the number is different.
Yeah, so I think there's two reasons for that.
No, no.
Well, one is based on October first and may include the out-of-district placements.
Your fourteen eighteen or your October one count?
There's a difference.
I'd have to look at it.
You might be right about the out-of-district, but that's only fourteen. The difference is thirty-three.
Because my budget numbers are based on fourteen fifteen, so I pulled my.
Don't know what will rise, but they'll both be right.
Yeah. That actually seems to.
It's two different years.
Oh, no. Twenty-two, twenty-three. The first two pages are both twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah, the first one was just the one, the bar.
Oh, you're looking at the bar.
The bar says, we'll get first two pages. Bar, first two pieces of paper.
I'm gonna go with that Misty's correct because her number is higher.
Oh.
I'm pretty confident in my number.
And she gave me the other number.
Well, you got your numbers from them. I said I got my number, so, well. Mine's eighty.
Regardless of which one is right, let's see if we can get on the same page, okay? One, one more, yeah. Pagel, if you would. Gail, next year, how many teachers teaching first grade in Elston Primary?
One.
You have five students, is that correct?
Sarah Porter's got five.
No, Alstead had it too, because I think there were seventeen in K.
The ones, typically, those are the ones that are coming from kindergarten, but we don't always have kids who go to kindergarten. We always have more than the split. Like right now, based on the kids we have now, we have six to Actworth, five to Elston Primary. This is the highest number that's gone to Sarah Porter in years.
Yeah, that was higher than Sarah Porter.
You have seventeen students in kindergarten now.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, okay. Okay, and, and assuming the Sarah Porter and Actworth numbers are right. I mean, you're, you're showing first grade of eighteen, which is one, one more. I don't know where it came from, but one more. And, and so it looks like there are five students.
Right, we always have move-ins over the summer, and we have kids who start school in first grade and don't attend kindergarten.
Also not required.
How many?
Well, last year, it looks like they had twelve in Elston Primary.
Yeah.
So I don't know, we'd have to go back and look at that split. I think what Jamie suggested going forward is probably a good thing. Just take the running average for A and Y. Because none of them are required in the township.
And it's very hard to estimate, especially for prepaying pay, because I don't know, in my attendance area of people register late. And you start advertising in January, and we have kids, you know, coming in right after the beginning of school. Some kids go to kindergarten elsewhere and then come here in first grade.
I can attest to that, to explain. I'm trying to get, we're gonna go hood up, and then we got kids gotta search toward Bay after starts and change the whole route.
Yeah, Steve, we did it out. I do not believe I am as confused as I thought me a moment ago. The number in the front is preschool being counted as one.
Ah.
Number in the back is preschool being counted as point five.
Oh, yeah, that would make sense.
Yeah.
All right. So.
So, can I, we really are expecting only one thousand three hundred and eleven students district-wide to twenty-two, twenty-four?
One thousand three hundred and eighty-five.
No.
Oh, well, twenty-two, yes, correct. Based on the estimate. And that's half, yeah, that's still the half. So the number of kids is actually little more than that, but they're not attending full day.
Yeah, but Tom comes. I guess Mary said you have an error at the high school, which then flows through the following year. So the three eleven is probably too small, too. Or it is, I can tell you, three eleven is too small.
Yeah, I can tell you what.
It's higher than that.
Oh, he had the graphing calculator, but while you guys are sitting there.
I have a letter to read to the school board. Earlier tonight, I emailed to the board this letter, and I can do it again. I, I piggybacked on Misty's email, so whether you've seen it or not. This was drafted from the budget committee, and it has to do with student, student counts, class sizes, and a possible direction of our district going forward. So I'll read it here. To the school board. In the school year nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand, Farm Mountain Regional School District enrollment peaked at two thousand, two hundred and two students. Our average class size was about twenty. Since then, we have lost slightly over a third of our enrollment, and our average class size has shrunk to around fourteen. Salaries and benefits comprise seventy-five to eighty percent of our total costs. If we limit our efforts to the other twenty to twenty-five percent of the budget, much of which is fixed costs and overhead, there is not a lot of opportunity for savings. To put this in perspective, please review the following as an estimate of the number of regular teachers needed to maintain a given average class size. A class size of twenty would require seventy-two teachers. And that goes to a class size of fourteen requires one hundred and three teachers. Of the seven budget committee members present at our October twenty-sixth meeting, there was unanimous consensus that an average class size of twenty is respectable for a public education system, especially one of our means, and that we should be moving in that direction, though not all in one year. Assuming a total cost of compensation for a teacher of eighty thousand dollars, then every addition of one student to average class size will allow for the employment of five fewer teachers at a savings of four hundred thousand dollars. Doing so will also result in five vacant classrooms. In time, this should create enough space to consolidate both Charlestown and Walpole students into two schools rather than three. But not for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Centralizing the students will likely produce other savings in time, as well as lessen the time principals and some teachers, art, music, P E, et cetera, spend traveling between schools. It certainly will reduce building-related costs and related support services. In some cases, it will reduce transportation time for students. For example, Walpole students who live near the Westmoreland and Surrey lines will no longer need to shuttle to and from North Walpole after arriving at Walpole Middle School, right, Art? To accomplish this goal, some use of combination grade classroom, classes in Charlestown, Walpole, and perhaps one in Alstead will be necessary. We have operated under this format in Actworth and Langdon for at least the past thirty-five years. So we know that this approach isn't detrimental, as students from those two towns seamlessly assimilate when they attend Alsted Primary and Vileus. In Actworth and Langdon, the class mix is always random. For example, a grade one, two class of sixteen may have four grade one students and twelve grade two students. However, in Charlestown and Walpole, their larger size will allow for the continuation of one grade-specific class at every grade and combination grades to achieve these savings. This approach will allow for a balanced grade mix and the ability to make the combination classes slightly smaller to aid the teacher. It will also allow for the mixing of students with similar abilities, as we know students, especially in the lower grades, mature and progress at different rates. In summary, we believe it is time to recognize that our dramatically smaller enrollment, which seems to have leveled off but not trended back upward, warrants that we right-size our schools. We ask that the school board join us in this approach so that we may present a unified recommendation to the public. Ideally, in this stressed economic climate, we would like to offer one overall unified budget proposal. On behalf of the Budget Committee, Gabriel C. Pierre, Chair. I will reiterate that that is in your email for you to digest as well.
We did pass our last, you made me learn. Did you let them know about our last meeting? Our last warrant article? We did pass at our last school board meeting a warrant, a proposed warrant article to change the articles of agreement to eliminate the North Charlestown and North Walpole. And then add, add an additional language that would allow the towns of Walpole or Charlestown to vote to close one of those schools if they chose, if they chose, right? They have, they'll have, the voters of those towns will have that power. So we are, I think, pretty much in agreement with you. We have more problems and more discussion. We have to have about Actworth, Alstead, and Langdon. Funny, I'm just at the dump and talking to the selectmen, and that's where a whole few conversations happen. And found out that maybe that, maybe Langdon has changed a little bit in terms of trying to keep that school. So, you know, I think, I think we're kind of in agreement with the current board that this is. That this is um. There are. Um, ways to, to. I want to look at that. And I save money, it's about making. Consolidation, yeah, just to consolidate. Well, thank you.
Just a comment, uh. I don't have a computer, so I didn't see your letter, but hearing it for the first time at face value, it sounds reasonable. Gabe's right about the huge percentage of our budget that is employees. Right, and if this district is interested. In saving money, in saving the taxpayers, in saving the voters, then. That seems to be a reasonable way to go. The only way to save big money is close buildings or reduce staff. Anything else that we do is just nickel-dime stuff that isn't really going to affect anybody.
So. Theoretically, there are other mechanisms available, right, to consolidate or reduce the number of teachers. Um, so for example, like your. The approach that was mentioned is about combining classrooms and that type of thing. I think in a place kind of like what Walpole did at one point, right, kind of as a stepping stone of potential change in Charlestown. Could be reconfiguration of grades. So Charlestown Primary takes grades A, B, C, North Walpole takes D, E, F. And the middle school is G, H, I, J, or something like that. That would, that wouldn't be a combined classroom. But it would. Potentially save a teacher or two in terms of numbers. Likewise, if you look at like the high school level. There are potential change savings theoretically by either reducing. The spectrum of courses available to students. Or even reduce, changing the mechanisms that you do. Uh, use, so for example, block scheduling tends to require more staffing than a traditional schedule. Both of those things that I just mentioned have the potential at times to become charged. You know, people like what they like, like what they know. With the case of, you know, if you remember back to when North Walpole switched. People in Walpole were a little upset to start, and then they said they loved it, my understanding of it.
There. That was there.
Yeah, well, I, I started the year after it happened, and people were still a little edgy, and later on, they thought it was free. So I could foresee, for example, if you did that in Charlestown, you might get the same result. Um. Whenever, ever, ever, ever you touch a high school schedule, you're gonna get something. When they went, and I don't know if Tom was here. When we transitioned, I don't know when we did it, from a traditional to a block. My guess is there was a lot.
I wasn't here, but I was at the district.
And was there ruh-rah about it? Like, how did you change, or were they cool with it? That's the technical term.
I, I think the high school was okay with it.
They were okay.
And they said, you know, if we move, if we go forward with this, it's gonna cost more money. Right, I mean, that's one of the things that they were saying, right from the, right from the get-go.
Yeah.
So I mean, so those are.
I was here, but as far as the education, I don't think people had too much of a problem because of the opportunities.
Correct.
And of the opportunities to graduate early, and of the opportunities to get your requirements out of the way sooner, so that you could take some electives later.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's true.
And how soon, so here at college, yeah.
Yeah.
But Steve did say, when we did it, that it was gonna cost more.
Right.
And that was clear.
And it does.
And. The high school currently has four hundred and eighty-seven students this year. In grades five through eight, there are three hundred and seventy-three students. In grades one through four, there are three hundred and seventy-nine students. So in the next few years, high school is going to get dramatically smaller, Tom knows that. Um, we've got to start preparing for that, because that's going to be difficult to maintain breadth of curriculum. But it also means that the staffing has to change to reflect that.
Just an update, Steve, uh, sorry, the, the number for twenty-three, twenty-four all-in should be thirteen forty-five. And the high school should be a total of four seventy-seven.
That sounds better.
But, question, did the budget committee talk at all about? Pretty solid in the middle school.
I doubt.
Three, three forty, or that went on the line.
Uh, when it was formally proposed many years ago, we got twenty-three percent of votes. Twenty-three percent of the vote is not.
It was on warrants for the study and.
It would save a lot of money.
Massive.
The other things, just for consideration, that I know Mary has mentioned briefly is. I don't think they'll produce the long-term savings you're talking about, but. Would um, would the body want us to remove the items, the capital improvements? And put them on separate warrants is one question. And then the other question would be, would the body want us to? Look into the possibility of potentially removing the reading, writing, math, and put it into a grant if we could. Do it that way or phase it in differently. So I just think it's important to sort of have a couple of different options in your mind, which is better than saying, I don't like how your toilet paper costs more.
Questions that you can make, Gabe, you want to fill your agenda, or?
We have a meeting this Wednesday, correct?
I would, I would just say, more things you can pull from the operating budget to go on warrant articles. I think you'd have a better chance.
I mean, right now, our um trusts are fairly well-funded.
Yes.
To be able to afford what is sitting there for the four hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Overall.
Unless they're exceptional capital improvements, I'd like to keep them in the budget. That's just my opinion. I understand the approach of multiple warrant articles. I'd like to think we produce graduates, do understand that the sum of the pieces equal the whole. So, you know, and now Jamie's saying, no, they don't, that's, we'll say it. Tom, we need to work on the math.
More opportunity.
Can I just say something about the high school enrollment? So although it's projected four seventy-seven, that's not including any students who would tuition in, those shouldn't last their unit. They're not included in there. Okay?
They're not?
Because right now, we get students in potion.
Oh, yeah, they're adding the number?
But, well, they're, they're coming.
Yeah.
But the projection is based on only our middle schools coming up. So we haven't added extra students.
That's right.
Well, there should be an estimate for that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We should take that.
We've actually added a bus stop at the Unity Elementary School. We used to just go to the second Four Corners, and that was it. Uh, but we did travel the extra five or six mile to Unity School, um, because we had some parents that, that asked us. Um, if we did that, they would like to enroll in Fall Mountain.
The majority of students of Unity come here.
Yeah, well, then we should find out how large their eighth grade is. Yeah, I don't want to make this number.
You're right, you're right.
I don't want to make this number small, I want to make it right.
In two years, the number goes drastically down, so, but yes.
But again, if, if, that's in part because we're not including the influx of Unity students.
I can get, I can get that.
Right, because we're rolling off the seniors.
Follow schools and see approximately what we would have, be able to put into the.
That, that may be.
I was just, I was just thinking about that now.
You know, that's a good point.
Have we included those, and, and I don't.
Not for ninth grade.
And the people that come over for the uh.
Well, that makes us look like we're shrinking faster than we are, and that's, you know, again, all I want is the right number. Yeah, not a lower number, the right number.
Surely, yes, the floor. So we have, we talked about the. The middle school, the district-wide middle school, right, but we have to start somewhere. Which is why I think it's so important for that warrant to pass. For Charlestown and Walpole to be able to close their smaller schools that they want. So doing that also sets the communities up to start thinking about. Like the bigger picture of things, so we really want to start having those discussions about a district middle school. Not only do we need to start now, but we need to start preparing. The communities to start thinking differently about their schools, so we all love our schools. Um, Charlestown will base its own dilemma when we go to try to close North Charlestown, because people love that school, but. We really need to start thinking about where we're going and how we're gonna get there. And if we start waiting for the middle school discussion in two years, um, we're behind the eight ball already. We're actually behind the eight ball already now, but I think we can do some catch-up if we can get that warrant passed this year about. Closing the two smaller schools and then. Begin to have those district middle school conversations, so what seems to happen when we talk about district middle school is. We bring it up, we talk about it, goes on the warrant. People, we have about three, four months to digest what that means, so if we can start. Preparing and doing some presentations now on what it would look like in preparing. So in two or three years, when we do put it on the warrant. People have already thought about it, they're already thinking about it, they've already heard it, it isn't like a shock to their system, like. Oh, my God, what's the school board doing now, or what's the S A U doing now, so. Um. If the budget committee and, and the school board really feel that. Three, four years down the road, a district middle school is where we would like to go, I think we need to begin having those discussions with our communities. Right away. Just so they can start. Swallowing some of it.
Just, just a little history on that, because I actually supported then a regional middle school, and I probably still would. But, you know, you have to look at what happened, and what happened was. You had one block of voters who just didn't want to spend the money, and you're always gonna have that, people. And then you had another block of voters that didn't want to put sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students on the buses with high school students. Which we would do, because right now, there's a tremendous imbalance, you got, you know, K through nine. On one set of buses, and then nine through, uh, K through eight, excuse me, and then nine through twelve on the other set of buses, with a lot of the eleventh and twelfth graders driving themselves to school anyhow. So there's a, you know, there's a great imbalance and a ridership imbalance. But we saw it's an opportunity to reduce the number of buses by better utilizing the high school buses and then easing the pressure on the elementary buses. While the parents went crazy, they did not want their sixth grader on the bus for twelfth graders. And, and there was a huge backlash over that issue, so you got, right or wrong, I'm not saying, suggesting that's right or wrong, I'm just telling you what happened. So you had two camps coming together saying no for different reasons, one for the money and one because they didn't want their children on the buses with, with high school students. But what is what?
Every year comes up, there'll be, there'll be two, three.
I thought it was a great idea.
Right, so when uh Jim brought it up. Jim presented it, it was two, two other camps, so I mean, every time we bring it up, there's gonna be camps, but.
Well, just know it got twenty-three percent of the vote.
Oh, I love the article.
And I voted yes. I thought it was a good idea.
I'm ready to move on to. I have a question or a comment about the Articles of Agreement, because I think it was also brought up that. Uh, we're going to formalize the Alsted. Area with Sarah Porter and.
Because our attorney was not present, we didn't feel comfortable making that change.
Okay, but we can still ask the attorney.
We still ask the attorney, I, I do believe, I, I believe this, we should be doing that, too.
Okay, and then the second thing was about the, for communities that specifically raise money for their needs. If they're not spent, there has to be a more equitable way for them to give their money back. Okay, so i- if there's some way we can adjust the Articles of Agreement to return funds. In a different way than the methods. If they're voted as specific for. Does everyone know what I'm talking about? Anyway, if, so, if, if we're going to make changes in the Articles of Agreement, there was an opportunity to. For more than just the one. The one change.
So we, in our last meeting, that came up as well, and we decided to um. Going to create a committee after, uh, probably the, after the budget cycle is done, and probably after elections. Um, we are to create a committee to look at the um, what we, the allocation is done. And come up, try and come up with a better or a different system that is easier to understand, and is still as fair as the methods.
Well, that was for changing the number of methods and then how the money is.
Right, so we have to change, we have to change, though, there's more to that process that, because that.
So you probably. Changing the way.
Right, because the way, probably what you're addressing is baked into the method, right? So that's a problem, you understand it's a problem.
Well, I would think it would be easier. Rectify the return of those.
But you have other funds that are shared that you would have a hard time, like special education costs, transportation. To try to, just because you have a teacher there, I mean, other schools pay for other things.
Xander just told you were four hundred thousand dollars over this year. That's the.
That's coming from all of us.
That's the other side of that coin. Just understand that. You know, I understand the hundred thousand dollars, and it didn't get spent, and it should have gone back. But you can't cherry pick it, you have to look at all of it then. I'm not suggesting that all of it, I'm just suggesting if we can do this, you have to look at all of it. You can't just pluck off something that's favorable and then say, oh, four hundred thousand.
And the taxpayers recognize that, so when they see an article, a warrant.
If it's a warrant article, that'd be different.
No, this is what we're talking about, all right?
Specific warrant article?
Yeah, Alsted is going to vote to allocate. X number of dollars for very specific pur- purpose, and it doesn't get spent.
Has to be turned back, that's different, you know, for, yeah, okay, that's different. If it was a specific warrant article, yes, I agree.
But if it was a specific warrant article, it would only become from the taxpayers of Alsted.
Right.
Right, because if it didn't get spent, she's right, it should be turned back.
Should be turned.
To those same taxes.
But if it's a warrant article, but not the whole budget.
No.
No.
Just a warrant article.
So we don't usually, how many times have we had warrant articles that are town-specific where they spent money? Not very many.
Only on capital.
But only on capital reserve, the whole time I've been here, I think.
You know, you could, you could bake that right into the warrant article, solve the problem.
Right, you just put it into the.
In the event, in the event this doesn't get spent, it shall be returned.
Right, right, yeah, in the warrant article itself, so you don't have to have a specific one to the articles.
Okay, as long as it's that simple, it's solution.
Well, I think that's. I think that's why it's so important. For me specifically, to get the numbers from Xander. Because I suspect. That there might be larger numbers in the Charlestown tenants areas. Which would justify that hundred thousand, right, so if it's over four hundred thousand and the numbers. Are higher in Charlestown, then there is some of that give and take, right, where you can explain a little bit of that. It's a lot, it's, when you're talking about special ed costs, those are really hard for residents to understand, because. You, it's not all black and white, it's, it's, yeah, so.
So when we decide, this is a little bit further down the road, but when we decide on a path forward, whatever that is, whether that's. Of district-wide middle school or multi-age, one, two, three, four, whatever that is. What is the plan so that the budget committee and the board speak with one, with one voice? So that, because there's how many of us here, there's like thirty, I don't think. Whatever, there's a lot of us here, and we don't want to have as many of us with conversations, we want to make sure that. We're, we're, we're having, when we have those meeting people at the dump, and we're having that, that we're all saying, saying the same thing, I think that's gonna go to the. The, the idea that, okay, this is what everybody is thinking, and this is what our, our plan is, so. Just the Mexican, again, maybe not for this meeting, but it's a thought to be.
To, to answer that from my perspective, I think you have two things to consider, right, so the first would be this budget itself. And my hope would be that whatever decisions are made. That the whole group could agree to that, but then going forward from that point. That's when we would say, either during that process or right after, like, we've also talked long-term. And our goals are to look at our declining enrollment or to look at resalivation. And just pick those things that as a group, we can all agree to. And say with one voice. and say with one voice and don't get bogged down into the minutia if you haven't agreed to it yet. You know, that's like, so this, I thought was a good conversation. But I don't think you have any definitive answer yet. And so go out and say, well, I'm pretty sure we're gonna have this, this and this, we'll just cause you grief later on. So that would be my record.
We're ready to move on to the timeline.
All right, so the thing with the timeline is that I need access, Brendan. You blocked me. I need access, Mr. Steve. But the budget timeline that we have lists a whole host of dates coming up. So Wednesday, the thirtieth is a budget committee meeting. Then the following Monday is the school board budget committee workshop on budget. June, does it make sense that we need both of those meetings? And then what would be the purpose, I guess, would be my question for that part. And then I wanna just make sure that um we're set with the other date, right? There was.
Yeah, so the Monday, December fifth meeting.
Thank you, go ahead.
The Monday, December fifth meeting was added by the budget committee and just trying to get some clarity on what um the expectation was for that meeting, what, what the hope. Took them out of that meeting and was, is it similar to tonight? Is that what you're looking for or do we still need it?
Looking for my notes.
I just wanted to just review the entire timeline, make sure that everybody was on the same page.
I know.
I will call the committee. When we set those dates, we didn't wanna be running out of time and not having spent enough.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jamie.
When we are initially asked about the fifth, it was to do a joint meeting.
That's great.
So uh for the draft budget presentation, which we have, so I don't know that we, I don't know whether the fifth is still relevant or not.
When is the school board going to vote on the budget?
They'll vote the same time that we do, usually after the budget hearing.
Well, fine, okay, it is.
The twelfth of June, right?
January. The budget hearing is scheduled for the twelfth of January and then the Monday, January twenty-third is when everybody will finalize it, which is a little tight. I'm a little concerned about that date. I think it needs. It's a little close to the deadline.
Budget committee both have to have a budget.
I think it would make sense too that if we can get to kind of an agreement, there's no reason we couldn't back that up. It's like, well, there's some big reasons, but you'd have some stakes.
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah. Yeah.
I think there should be one more joint.
So are all the union agreements in here accepted?
Yes.
Yep. By two cents.
Jennifer?
Um I, I thought that once we had the budget from the school board, that we were going to look at it critically and then come back with another or a proposal or an agreement with what was submitted. And that gave us, that meeting this Wednesday um would give us an opportunity to look at some of the, you know, some of the numbers and find each other way. So that Monday, December fifth was going to be, okay, you know, one of these budgets is gonna be proposed. Right? I thought that's why we wanted another meeting on the fifth. December.
That was the, is it seventeenth? December seventeenth was a breakdown meeting of the budget committee.
Okay, right.
So we wanna come back. Um Steve D'Alessio made a good point. We would like another meeting with the school board before uh January twenty-third finalization date.
Before January twelfth.
Well, yeah.
Before January twelfth budget hearing.
Yeah.
So just a suggestion, because I'm, I'm looking at the timeline now, we, we have a couple of areas that finalize, finalizing the budgets. But Monday, December twelfth was always our the school board would finalize their budget before going into holiday and then coming back and that sort of thing. It's on your timeline for the budget committee to do that. Maybe a suggestion would be to come back together and as a group finalize the budget.
So, yeah, away with the fifth of December.
And use the twelfth as another group meeting. Because your January, you have a January second budget committee to finalize budget, but you really should kind of be really should.
It's not gonna get anything else too.
It seems like an extra meeting and I'm not entirely sure unless we come together on the twelfth and it's just not working and you need that meeting. The timeline just isn't making sense to me and I just wanna make sure we're hitting all of our targets.
Mine, mine is scribbled all over, so it's not making as much sense to me. I'm glad, I'm glad we're going through this process.
Well, we were looking at, we, the budget committee was looking at January second.
So moving it from the twelfth where we would normally finalize that, Jamie?
Yeah, just because I don't know, I, we thought we were gonna need more meetings to do it. I, I, I think that, I think after Wednesday's meeting, we might have a better grasp of how, what else we need to do. Don't you think?
Yes.
Now we could maybe make changes to this.
Yeah.
So Monday, so if it this week, it wouldn't be, it would be just a budget committee for the November thirtieth.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And then
and it looks like we were gonna do a Monday, the fifth. But on Monday, the fifth, we could we can, we just the budget meeting again. And then do a joint on the twelfth.
And what the joint on the twelfth be?
May not need it.
Does the school board have a meeting anyway?
That's our, the twelfth is our regular business meeting. Yeah. And I, I do think it's important that everybody gets together and comes to some sort of consensus before we get to the budget hearing.
Yeah. There's the twenty, the twelfth, we do need a, we need a school board meeting on twelfth, it's what we have to cover.
And we also need to review the draft warrant. I mean, these are, we're just.
She's just getting nervous.
I'm getting, this is getting very anxious about it.
The only one that's not the board.
Yeah.
So when you, when it says post uh I can't read that firm, but it says budget hearing and warrant article request.
That's me, that's, that's my timeline.
But that for petition requests. Petition warrant article request. Warrant articles don't have to be voted on and approved until the third week of January.
And it's, it's morning, the budget hearing, yeah.
I'm just making sure, because I'm a uniform up there in my time to. Um so, so we wouldn't be holding anything up though if we kept our December seventeenth.
Right.
If there were still things we needed to stop. Now, we don't have a second meeting, a second regular meeting?
No, never do in December. That's why usually that, no, that's okay, the December twelfth, the December twelfth is usually when the board will finalize the budget. And then when we come back from holiday and that sort of thing, we're, we're really getting ready for the budget hearing.
On the.
We do have, we do have one.
Um so I think that if, as unpopular as it may be, I'm just gonna lay it out there. If we can't come to consensus on the twelfth, then we need, the budget committee needs the meeting on the seventeenth. That we may have to have a quick one on the nineteenth.
We do have a night, the school board has a regular meeting on January ninth before the budget.
No, I need them on the nineteenth of December. I said it wasn't gonna be popular, so it's. I think I have two meetings that night, so whatever, um. What a different world. Um I, I don't know, because we haven't had a chance to discuss it all and look at it. I think the, I think the budget committee and really enough to Gabe and the budget.
I think we'll know more after Wednesday night, how far, how far we really are.
This will be a point of discussion. Um for now, we can set in stone the January twelfth budget hearing and work back from there.
Yeah.
I think there's two.
You have to have that one.
We can really all two, right? The January twelfth meeting and the school board meeting on the twelfth, right? Of December?
December twelfth and January twelfth, yeah.
Yeah.
He just needs some clarity what the December twelfth meeting is going to be.
Yeah.
And what the.
And both groups finalize it, right?
Be a joint workshop.
If we still not on the fifth of the budget committee, we might be able to finalize one to send to the board on the twelfth.
At an offsite location?
No, no, on the two, because we have it on our, instead of having a joint one with the board on the fifth, if we kept the one on the fifth, the budget committee.
Right, at an offsite location.
It can be here. It can be here. We don't have a meeting that night. This meeting was your requested meetings, right?
The budget committee.
Okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah.
So you have one Wednesday, this one, and then you still have the one next Monday.
Right, so we give us the budget committee, we have two back for that.
Okay.
To try to come up with either.
Yeah, I have those dates in my calendar already, so it's a question of whether we can stick to them. If we need them.
Okay, so that's for the budget committee. That's November thirtieth, this Wednesday. December fifth.
And then the hope to come out of that one with
With the twelfth, basically, everybody coming together, finalize budget, present their budget to the.
Twelve.
I mean, essentially, right.
And if we cannot make consensus at that time, the budget committee has December seventeenth scheduled.
Yeah.
Yes.
Saturday, the seventeenth.
And worst case, if they didn't come to consensus, then the board might have to hold them.
Yeah, because anything, anything later than that's gonna be really hard for Mary to prepare for the budget. I mean, that's, that's not realistic.
I totally get it, yeah.
You take the more information.
Four in January one.
Yeah.
The sooner we get it, the better off for all of us. Because that way we get our stuff together. You're not caught unaware. We answer questions of how did that guy lose twenty high school students, things like that.
Well, the other part of it is that sometimes there isn't consent.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah.
It generally isn't, but hopefully they will be at the outset.
Going through the positives.
Yeah. So just to review, Monday, the twelfth will be the budget committee presenting their budget to the school board. And hopefully we can get to some sort, it's gonna be a regular business meeting. It won't be like a workshop. It'll be an actual meeting. Hopefully we'll have draft warrant articles for the school board to.
Well, that's why I was wondering about the four hundred eighty thousand, because.
Yeah.
I think Gabe's got that on the list.
But, but I meant the board, though, can decide that they don't want in their budget and make it warrant articles as well. So, but I mean, we already have them written. We just would have to change the numbers. Hold the numbers.
Okay, I'll update the timeline. So Monday, the fifth is just gonna be the budget committee is going to need to look on the budget.
And then everything else will be on it for now.
Yeah.
But we may be able to discuss it from the seventeenth.
Couple, couple of questions about for Mary. For Wednesday night, and I suspect this is a short list, I'm hoping it wouldn't be too much trouble. If we get a list of all the positions, budgets for next year that are new and also any positions that you've eliminated and the financial impact of that. Listening to the principals didn't sound like there's very many, so.
There wasn't any ones added. We just moved around the music teachers.
Well, not, not concerned about moving, there's no new positions at all. Were there any positions eliminated?
No, we didn't eliminate any positions.
No, neither. It's a really short list then, yeah.
Yeah.
You have two new ones, there are eight.
They're not new, but they're in this budget.
Yeah, we just haven't found anybody, yeah.
Right, no, that's, I'm not, I'm looking for, you know, changes.
So I'll add to that question, how many unfilled positions are there in the district right now?
Uh we'd have to go through and look at our latest job posting. Yeah, I'm guessing we're somewhere around, well, I can't.
You can get the numbers.
I can, I just have to count with my fingers.
The second question for Mary was teacher and men early retirement. How many was that? Did you say how many people?
Oh, I don't know that number. I thought I had, I had the number of how many were left for the sickly buyback. I'd have to go back and look at that. We have two, we had two to it this year, yes. We have two other, yes.
Yeah.
Two more.
Teacher early retirement is based on twenty percent a year for five years, right?
Right, yeah.
So one seventy on its face at least sounds pretty high at twenty percent.
But we have them, because we've had a lot of people retired.
They have a lot of them.
Yeah, and we've added a couple more this.
It could be a lot of people, that's why I'm asking the question.
You wanna know how many people it is.
Yeah, there's a hundred and seventy on it basically sounds high when it's only a twenty percent. Because that would be five times that number that we hit all at once.
But remember, that includes benefits, okay? Just making sure, okay?
Well, includes social security, doesn't include health and dental, because they don't have it.
Well, seventeen, seventeen, yeah. So there's seventeen unbilled positions, including parents, secretary to the uh student services coordinator. Two music teachers, a math, chemistry, I think, or physics, whichever one that is. And a few others, so.
Can we also get some feedback?
Sure. I think they're getting closer, right?
Once.
Yeah, Nandy, you guys have another negotiation coming up Wednesday and hopefully you're close after that, if not done. That accurate? There you go.
Yeah, I go with not done, but that's just me.
Yeah, well, it's gonna be one or the other. At a certain point, you'll end up, and I don't think the people who say are here, but you'll go down mediation and then.
Having been the idiot that was late for this meeting, is there any way I can get those slides that I just presented?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'll send the, I can send it.
I didn't know.
Here.
So thank you.
The difference would be.
The difference will be a lot.
I think we're done. That was not a. He's keeping a motion through, John? If they want.
I make a motion to do it here.
Yes, thank you.
Always get it.
Very good. I'm in favor.